Action. All right, it is 7 o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. For attendance, for members, we have myself, we have Heather, Nicole, and Ruth Van. We expect to have Tanya jump on and Rick LaBouris to come late, and I have not heard anything from Jimbo. All right, so I would entertain a motion to recess our regular meeting so we can have our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to recess the regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's call this public hearing to order. Let me just read the notice that was sent out. Public hearing, Town of East Windsor Charter Revision Commission. The Charter Revision Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, at 7:00 PM via Zoom conference meeting. Purpose of this hearing is to obtain public input on comments on the charter that has been proposed to the town's charter. East Windsor Commission, and then we have our Zoom link information there. So... For those who don't know, we've been working on the charter for three, four months now. Our focus was mainly to look at Section 8, about the 2% on the budgets and the voting. So that was our focus. We made a couple of other minor grammatical changes throughout the document. That was also posted with the public notice, the marked up version of the charter that we had. And then we had the attorney, Josh Hawks Lad, take a look at it. He had a couple of changes that were highlighted, but that was it. So I would open it up now to the public for any comments or input, if you can just state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody that has any comments? Okay. Well...
Yeah, we're missing Tom tonight. He's outside watering the garden, so we have no comments from the peanut gallery.
All right, this sounds good. He's been pretty involved anyway, so...
Yes.
Oh, I think that's Jimbo.
That is.
Wait, I think he usually calls in. Well, there's no public that has any questions or input. I guess we could close the public hearing and go back to our regular meeting. This is so weird.
Rebecca, this is Jason. Since it's only 7:03, you may want to give folks a couple of minutes in case they do want to come on just for the sake of, you know, inclusion.
Okay, yeah, we'll just, we'll hold off until 7:05 to see if any more folks join on and take questions up until then, I guess, and we'll just hang out.
Young, uninitiated town, traffic is a nightmare. 91 was closed down for about four hours this afternoon. And then there was another major accident at the intersection of 140 and Route 5. So traffic is crazy, and people have been seeing it for literally hours.
Yes, that is also true. I forgot about that. I forget people actually leave their house, because I do not.
Hey, I'm here.
Hey, Jimbo.
I was in, I was in the traffic mess, Charlie. From that side of town, it was interesting. I've seen the highway and Route 5. So I'm here.
Glad you made it safe, Jimbo. We are just going to hold off for a couple of minutes. There's not too much public on right now. We are in the public hearings section. We're just going to give everybody another minute or two to jump on if they have any questions or comments.
Oh, I think that's a good idea.
I see Kathy Simonelli has jumped on. She's the only other person that's jumped on that's public.
Have we got enough here for quorum?
Yes.
Rebecca, this is Jason again. It may also be worth, maybe we can put something on the town website or on the Facebook page indicating that you guys would take written comments if anybody has them?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't even think of that. I didn't realize that was actually an option.
Well, it doesn't hurt, because then it gives the selectmen after the fact any info.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not wired at home, so I actually had to cross the town. Geez. Guessing out of Light and Route 5, oh, I can't talk that way.
It's actually a really tragic circumstance that has it all tied up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the one on 91.
Well, they got one in front of the Sunoco now. There's three tops, fire, and it's in front. Everything out in front of the party, in Sunoco, down the hill.
Does Sunoco go in front of the exit 45 ramp?
Yeah, but it's up on the hill. I mean, the door up by the party, it's actually up on the hill.
Oh, wow.
That's where I jumped on the highway by the Sunoco, down by Bull Park, in that room. I couldn't get out. Turn around, I was trying to back up by five yards. I'd been out.
Well, I tried to go out. I was going to go grocery shopping, and I left Laurel Estates, and I drove to the first stop sign at Spring Street. And it took me 20 minutes to get from the first stop sign at Spring Street to the stop sign at School Street.
Wow.
So I said, no, I think I'll go home. I don't, I don't know how to go to the store that bad.
Yeah. All right, um, do we want to hold off another three minutes till 10:00 after to give people a chance to jump on if they want to, or just call it?
Call it, call it, call it, call it.
Any, any thoughts, everybody?
I think we can, you know, I, I think if we have, you know, if we reiterate that people could still send in, you know, via email, any advice that they have or any questions that they have, we could get back to them, but...
Yeah.
I mean, people could be, you know, anybody that's out could possibly be stuck still in that traffic.
Yeah, and they're not going to be jumping on in the next two minutes, probably, so...
Probably not. Probably they're going to get home and go, thank God I'm home.
Yes, and I'm sure Tanya is going to be stuck in that traffic and definitely not make it to this meeting. So I will text her to give her an update of what happens. So if that is the case and everybody's in agreement, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Rebecca?
Yes, oh, so, hold on, Sarah?
Sorry, Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue. I guess mine is more of a question. I did review what you had on the town's website, and I know I've been following your meetings and seeing where you guys were going with the 2%. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding it right. Do you have currently that if it didn't pass at the third referendum, that it would go to the Board of Finance for them to make the final decision? Is that where you currently are?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, no problem. Hi, Josh.
Hi, how are you?
Good. So there's not much public attending our meeting. We're thinking most people are either stuck in traffic or they're just not interested to join, so we're just kind of finishing up our public hearing. So if there's no further comments... Jimbo, are you saying something? I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep my phone away from the thing. I make a motion to end the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heather, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then I need a motion to reconvene our regular meeting.
I make a motion to reconvene our meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, so next item of business for us is to approve our regular meeting minutes from May 19th of 2020.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second them.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jimbo, are you a yea?
Sorry about that, yes.
Okay, then nobody opposes, so that is all set, and we are back to public participation. Is there any more public participation? All right, hearing none. We will move on to reviewing the charter, which at this point, I think I just have questions for Jason, if you're kind of back on the call, to see what our next steps are from here now that we've got our revisions. Josh has looked at it. We have no public input from our public hearing, so where do we go next?
Well, there is a specific process that's outlined in statute. It, I'm not sure what the left foot, right foot is. I would actually ask Attorney Hawks Lads about that. But it is going to involve at some point a recommendation from your commission to my board for us to take a look at what you have done. And then there is an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to return the work you have done to you with questions or suggestions, but ultimately, you guys will make the final determination on what is sent forward. The Board of Selectmen ultimately will make the final determination on the wording of the questions, is my understanding from, from the recent past. But if, if Attorney Hawks Lads has any clarifying comments on that, I'm happy to be corrected.
Let me just unmute. So I'm glad that I reviewed the statute before this meeting. I wasn't sure what my charge was going to be for this, but I did review it. First, it's, it's pretty technical, and you need to follow it to a T. I don't, have you all looked at it? 7190, 71, CGS Section 7-187. And then it goes through several sections after that. And 7191 is the primary statute that you have to follow. And I actually, last time I helped out the town, well, twice before, 2014 and 2009, one time it was done wrong, and they had to redo it. And the other time, it was done correctly, but it was rejected. So 7191 requires that you have the public hearing, which I guess you had tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so once you have the public hearing, just looking for my outline, hang on one second. The next step is to provide the draft charter to the town clerk. You've done that already?
Yep.
All right, so that was 7191. Okay, then we're up to 7191B, which means that it goes to the Board of Selectmen to hold at least one public hearing. I'm looking at, Jason, is that you sharing, who's sharing the screen? Whoever it is.
Jason.
Okay, so you'll see 7191, okay, good. You'll see right there that the commission submits its draft report to the clerk. The clerk transmits the report to the appointing authority, that's the Board of Selectmen. Has that happened?
It has not.
No.
Okay, when, when did the draft charter go to the town clerk?
So I sent the draft to the clerk last Thursday, I think it was, in preparation for this meeting, so it would be online for the public hearing that we just had tonight. So I guess that's my question, that the one that we sent to the clerk has all of the track changes on it. Should the draft that the clerk has be a clean copy with no track changes, just to have like the final product, or not yet?
No, that's fine to, to submit it with the track changes. Did it include my, my proposed revisions as well?
Yes, it did.
Okay, okay, um... Just one second, okay. So now then she has to provide it to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen has to hold a, at least one public hearing, and that public hearing has to be held not later than 45 days after submission of the draft report to the town clerk. So the first date that you and the Board of Selectmen have to look at are, is the 45 days from the date you submitted it to the town clerk, which was last Thursday. Then, um, let's see, next... After the Board of Selectmen holds a public hearing, the Board of Selectmen has 15 days to accept the report or recommend changes. So the Board of Selectmen, so really, it's going to be up to the Board of Selectmen now. You just have to watch the dates. Then if the Board of Selectmen accepts the draft report, then the report becomes final. So that means that then it will go to the next step for the approval process by the public. If the board rejects the reporter, has changes to the report, then there's a 15-day period to do that. I think I mentioned that already. And then there's other, if the Board of Selectmen is going to make any revisions or changes, they'll have to talk to me, because then it gets a little more complicated. Then, I'm not going to talk about rejection. That's a whole process as well. I'll skip that for now.
Okay.
And then, then there has to be a public hearing. I'm just looking for that timeline. Where is that? It's further down in G, I believe, hang on one second. But there will be a public hearing. I can't find the date, sorry. Oh, there it is. F, the proposed charter and charter amendments are prepared for a ballot by the Board of Selectmen and are submitted to the electors for approval. And at least 15% of the electors must approve it. And let's just see.
So just a clarifying, just a clarifying question on that. 15% must vote in favor of the changes, or 15% must vote on the changes?
It says, where is that, in F? It must be, or, okay, so it says, the statute says, if approved by a majority of the electors of the municipality voting thereon at a regular election, or if approved by a majority which number equals at least 15% of the electors of the municipality at a special election. So it depends on whether you do it at a general election or at a special election.
We're doing it in a general, we're doing it in November.
Okay, well, then, then it's a simple majority.
Okay.
Of all electors.
At this point, Josh, this really is set to go to the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Correct, and in fact, it must happen, the town clerk must forward it to the Board of Select.
Okay.
Jason, has that happened? Has anybody from the clerk's office forwarded you guys basically the posted charter?
They have not.
Okay. Should I follow up with them on that?
You should, and I will too.
Okay.
One thing I didn't talk about, but that is D, some of the mechanics. 30 days after approval by the Board of Selectmen, there must be a publication in full, at least once, in a newspaper, having general circulation in the municipality. And that's, let me just see, such a petition or the portion of the charter or homer orance being amended shall be published at least once in a newspaper. So you don't have to publish the entire charter, but those sections that you're going to change must be published. And with a notice that a complete copy of the charter and the amendments is available in the town clerk's office. So when that publication takes place, you want to publish the changes and give notice in that publication that the entire charter is available in the home, in the town clerk's office.
The timeline of that is once the Board of Selectmen look at it, or?
Correct, after, after the Board of Selectmen approve it, 30 days, within 30 days thereafter.
Okay.
I like Kathy's cat.
Well, then, that's what we will do. So do we need a motion to pass this over to the Board of Selectmen for the recommendations?
The motion should be, if you haven't done so, hang on one second. Let me just go to A. You held, so now you, you held at least two public hearings on it, right?
Yes, we had one March 3rd, I think was the date, and then the one today.
Okay.
Do you have a minute last time we went during the public meeting and then already the Board of Select?
Yeah, so you've got, you, you have a little bit of a proceed, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, but there's a procedural problem you're going to need to correct. And that may be why the town clerk hasn't done anything. But what was the question from the person on the phone?
Probably what you're going to correct, Josh.
Yeah, there's a, you guys, unfortunately, you have an error that you have to correct tonight. So 7191A provides that you have to hold two public hearings. The first one on the proposed charter, one prior to beginning any substantive work on the charter, and then one after the draft report to the appointing authority has been completed but not submitted, after which hearings, the commission may amend such report. So you, by submitting it last Thursday, you did not comply with the statute, which I think is exactly what happened in 2014, if I remember correctly. And I gave a legal opinion that those, that it's what we call a directory statute, not a mandatory statute. But we didn't catch that until it was like midsummer, so like August, so this is better. So what I'd like you to do tonight is, well, let me first ask a procedural question. When you delivered the charter to the town clerk, was there a motion to do that?
No, I had just sent it to her, so it was available on the town website for the public hearing. So the public had a chance to look at it and review the changes that we were...
Okay, all right, perfect. Then we're going to view that as not, that's not in compliance with the statute, which is fine. So now, let's get you in compliance with the statute tonight. So let's, um, let's do a motion. Let's just see, I wanted to see how the motion should be phrased. I'd like someone, I'd like you to call for a motion for someone to move to, just one second. To submit the draft report of the Charter Review Commission to... One second. The appointing authority. Actually, you scratched that, the Board of Selectmen, that's the appointing authority. So to the Board of Selectmen. Second. By submitting the draft report to the clerk, the town clerk, and requesting the town clerk to transmit such report to the Board of Selectmen. Okay, and now you need to hold another public hearing after you do that. So, so that's the motion. And that comes from a combination of 7191A and B. Then 7191B then says, after you guys do that motion and then submit it to the town clerk, oh, I'm sorry, then the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing within 45 days. Okay, so that's the motion. I don't know if you got it or not, or if you need me to repeat. You got it? Okay, Lonnie, can you read me, read me the proposed motion?
To submit the draft report of the Charter Revision Commission to the Board of Selectmen by submitting the draft report to the town clerk and request to transmit the report to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, and request the town clerk to transmit it to the Board of Select.
Okay.
Okay, if you could solicit a motion on that, that would be great.
I would entertain a motion for that. Does somebody want me to reread it, or did they write it down as well?
I wrote it down.
All right, you're up, Heather.
Let's see if I can do this. I make a motion to submit the draft report of the Charter Revision Commission to the Board of Selectmen by submitting the draft report to the town clerk and requesting transmission of the report to the Board of Selectmen?
From the town clerk.
And, and requesting the town clerk to, to transmit the draft report to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, is there any further discussion on that motion?
Yes, I would like that motion to be read five times fast.
Denied. What was that, Jimbo?
Nothing, I was being wise.
Okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion is approved, so I will send that email out to the town clerk after this meeting.
I have a question.
Yes.
Considering the fact that the general election's in November, and right now, we're at the middle to the end of June, do we want to drag this out so that it's still fresh in people's minds? Or do we want to hurry it all up and package it and be done with it?
I'd like to respond.
Go ahead.
If we do do it other than that election, we will have to have a special election, and we wouldn't beat that 15% of the voters.
No, no, I know all that. I'm just saying, keeping in mind the general elections in November, do we, I mean, I'm anticipating based on the timeframe we were just listening to, if everything works, we'll be done with this in August, right? Timeframe-wise.
Roughly, yeah.
And then there's a big lull between September and November. I mean, just leave it the way it is, and people will just refresh themselves when they...
I kind of just want to say yes, just because we didn't have a ton of public participation. So like, I don't think it's going to be a huge, like, what are they talking about? I don't remember anything, what it was just a couple of months ago. So I, I see what you're saying, but I don't know if we need to like drag anything out.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we've done our due diligence, but...
This is Jason from the Board of Selectmen. There is more to the process than the charter. This is Jason from the Board of Selectmen. Sorry, muted again. There is more involved in the process than just the Charter Revision Commission's role. The Selectmen have a role too, and then there needs to be the information that gets through the registrars and onto the ballot in sufficient time. So you guys, your process is typically an 18-month one that we've asked you to do in about eight. And so I don't think by any stretch you're, you're slowing the process down. I think you guys have done a phenomenal job of meeting the requests from the board, which is to get it done as quickly as possible. And once the, the process that Josh outlines is complete, there is still other stuff that needs to happen for this to be considered by voters in November. So you're, the timing is really, really good right now.
Okay.
Question. Once, once the Board of Selectmen take this over, won't this commission be dissolved?
No. No, no, not until it's approved, because the Board of Selectmen may send it back to you with proposed changes.
Yeah.
Well, I'm assuming that it didn't...
What was that? I did not hear that, Jimbo.
That's all right, I'm all done causing trouble.
Yeah, I mean, I think basically, so once the Board of Selectmen approves it, then that's when we could be dissolved?
Right.
Okay. Yeah. That's fine, that makes sense. Um, so I guess in terms of our, uh, bi-weekly meetings, um, they might just be canceled until we hear more from the Board of Selectmen. So I can just be in touch with Jason on when we should have another meeting based on their review and their comments or if they have any changes to make. Um, so I think our meetings will kind of just be up in the air for now, if that makes sense with everybody.
Jason, I have a question, if you can answer it. Would it be safe to assume that within like two meetings for, for you guys, this will get to you?
Uh, it's our intention to take this up as quickly as it's appropriate, uh, for us to do so.
Okay.
So... So was that a yes or a no?
Yes.
It'll, it'll depend on when you guys get it to the town clerk and what Josh advises me to do.
Yeah, I will send an email to the three clerk emails, um, to get that forwarded over to you guys.
Then we'll just wait for you, Rebecca, to get, to send us an email when we need to meet again.
Yeah, I'll just be in touch with Jason to get a rough time estimate on, once they review it, if they have changes and/or if they would like any of us to attend the Board of Selectmen meeting, if they have any questions for us whenever they hold their information.
Just to comment on timing for, so everyone knows, in, uh, seven-one-ninety-one B requires the Board of Selectmen to hold at least one public hearing on the draft report. Um, so that's, that will obviously slow things down a little bit because they have to notice the public hearing and, um, and hold it.
And is it my understanding, this is Jason again, is it my understanding that, um, this commission still needs to have a second public hearing after they submit the draft report?
No, the, tonight was their second public hearing. So now it's submitted and now it's up to you to hold the next public hearing on the draft report. And it, and the statute says that must be held within forty-five days of submission to the clerk. So that was the one we talked about earlier. So as soon as it's submitted to the clerk, you have, the forty-five-day clock is running, um, for you to call a public hearing on it.
So, wait, when are we supposed to have our second public hearing?
You don't, you just did. You had it tonight.
Yeah.
But the Board of Selectmen has to then have, um, let's see, uh, so fifteen, within, uh, so not later than fifteen days after the Board of Selectmen's last hearing, it then makes its recommendations, uh, to either change it or to approve it. And if it approves it, um... Uh, then, let's see, yeah, so that's the last, um, date.
But didn't, didn't we just talk about how we have to have our second one after the draft is sent out? And that this was the issue back in two thousand fourteen and we're catching it early?
No, you had to have your, uh, public hearing before it was submitted to the town clerk, which you just did.
I just sent it to the town clerk to post it for the public hearing, so it hasn't officially been like submitted for legal terms. So that'll happen tonight now that we've made that motion. Um, so then the clock will start ticking for the Board of Selectmen to hold their first public hearing on it.
And in your transmittal to the town clerk, you may want to say that the Charter Review Commission had its second, uh, public hearing on June sixteenth and approved this draft, um, uh, report and then the rest of what the motion said. I think that's usually, okay.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep. Is, is that it for tonight? Um, yeah, sorry, my ice machine was just going off. Um, yeah, if there's no other comments for the charter, um, I have all of my questions answered on the process of what needs to happen next. So if there are no other questions, I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Heather, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys so much for a great meeting. Uh, we will get this passed up to the Board of Selectmen ASAP.
Okay, bye.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Good night, Jason.
Hey, folks.